I'd like to call this regular meeting of the Raton City Commission to order. Mike Glenn, will you give the roll call?
Mayor Protem Schuster.
Present.
Commissioner Chatterley.
Present.
Commissioner Chavez.
Present.
Commissioner Giacomo.
Present.
And we'll note that Mayor Sagata is absent this evening.
You'll join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'd like to thank all the visitors. It's nice to see a few filled seats. The next regular meeting of the commission will be Tuesday, March 26th, 2019 at 6:00 PM. Notice of potential quorum. A quorum of the city commissioners may attend the New Mexico Municipal League District 3 meeting in Las Vegas, which will be, Las Vegas, New Mexico, which will be held April 10th at 10:00 AM to about 4:00 PM at the Plaza Hotel located at 230 Plaza Park. Plaza Park. We have a proclamation tonight for Women's History Month. Commissioner Chatterley?
Women's History Month, March 2019. Whereas American women of every race, class, and ethnic background have made historic contributions to the growth and strength of our nation in countless ways. And whereas American women have played and continue to play a crucial economic, cultural, and social role in every sphere of our nation's life by constituting a significant portion of the labor force working inside and outside of the home. And whereas American women have played a unique role throughout history by providing the majority of the nation's volunteer labor force and have been particularly important in the establishment of early charitable philanthropic and cultural institutions in the country. And whereas American women of every race, class, and ethnic background served as early leaders in the forefront of every major progressive social change movement, not only to secure their own right of suffrage and equal opportunity, but also in the abolitionist movement, the emancipation movement, the industrial labor union movement, and the modern civil rights movement. And whereas American women in history deserve to be recognized and celebrated for their contributions to literature, teaching, and study of American history. Now therefore, the city of Raton, New Mexico hereby proclaims March 2019 as Women's History Month and urges all citizens in Raton to recognize the generations of women who have helped shape our culture, our traditions, our economy, and our history. In unison, the seal of the city of Raton is affixed this 12th day of March 2019.
I believe we do.
So I'll give this to you to hold there in the middle.
All right. First item on the agenda is the approval of the February 26th. Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. Do we have any comments from the general public at this time? Seeing none, we'll move on to approval of the regular commission meeting minutes from February 26th, 2019.
I'll make a motion to approve the commission minutes from Tuesday, February 26th, 2019.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any opposed? Motion passes. We now have a department presentation by Mr. Jared Chatterley and his Department of Parks and Rec.
I'm gonna move this. I can only move too far. Yes, if you would click for me, please. Thank you, ma'am. But it'll be okay if you're willing to click. Whoa, man. What a way to start right there. Mayor Protem, commissioners, it's a pleasure to stand before you today and to talk a little bit about the Park and Rec Department and to talk about recreation in Raton. You all know me. I'm Jared Chatterley. I'm the Park and Rec Director. And I'd like to start my presentation with talking just a little bit about recreation in general. So there are 24 hours in a given day. We all know that. We're gonna assume that out of those eight hours, out of those 24 hours, eight hours is work or school. We would love to have eight hours of sleep, so we're gonna go to have eight hours of sleep. So we subtract that. That leaves eight hours of what is considered recreation time. Now, what is in those eight hours is very diverse. Most people have the concept that recreation is something you do with the rec center, that it is very much a compartmentalized activity. But it is a very broad, huge umbrella that encompasses recreation. And this is just a smattering list of things that could be considered recreation, from going to the gym to participating in the performing arts, to going to church, to serving on a city commission, going to see a movie, and the list goes on and on and on. And I won't insult you by reading all those things. It's interesting that the very bottom there, you'll notice a category called marginal recreation. And some of the things listed under there, we don't normally talk about in general public, but those are considered recreational activities. They may not be considered wholesome recreational activities, but they are considered a recreation, things that people do to recreate. So as you can see, recreation isn't just a little spectrum. It is a very broad and diverse thing that we call recreational activities. And pretty much anything you can fit within that eight hours of time where you're not working, where you're not sleeping, you are participating in some form of recreation. So if we break down the business of recreation, there is, take all those activities and you start to put them into a business category, there is a variety of different businesses. And I would like you to consider how much goes in to each one of these different industries. Take, for example, just football. And think of what is spent in Little League football, or Pee-wee football, high school football, college football, professional football. When you think about the marketing, the merchandise, the facilities, the advertising, all that money and business that's associated with just football. That's not even taking into consideration the big five that are put up there. And then you break down all the other ones, travel and tourism, health and wellness, outdoor recreation. How much of an economic impact there is in those eight hours of a day that we consider recreation. So you know, you can go, the recreational illicit drug business. You know, El Chapo was a recreation director. He may not be one that we were necessarily, but he was, you know, providing recreational drugs for... So I like to explain this just to help broaden people's understanding of when we talk about recreation, what it is we're truly talking about. So I'd like to focus just on the outdoor recreation industry here for a minute. These facts came out of the outdoor industry, recreation industry. Eight hundred and eighty-seven billion dollars in consumer spending annually. 7.6 million American jobs. And remember, this is just the outdoor recreation little industry. This is not taking even all those other ones that we had talked about. The tax revenue, the billion in state and local revenue. So a huge economic impact in our local economy, state economies, our national economy. So here's another little bit of a breakdown. So if you see, recreation is that, the orange line there. The ones to the right of it are actually healthcare and finance. And then there's a big drop, and that's outdoor recreation just there by itself. The job comparison shown over there with the trees is compared to the other industries. And I was looking at this. It was interesting. If you took then out of those other industries that are there, the computer technology, the construction, and you took out of those industries what were considered recreation. So you have computer technology. If you took out all the computer gaming and all the different things that are, computers are used for recreation, and lumped that over into the recreation field, same with construction, the construction of recreation facilities, such like that, all the way down, you can see how much of an impact in the economy recreation has in general. So outdoor recreation in New Mexico. 65% of New Mexico residents participate in outdoor recreation. I honestly believe that's probably low. I think in our rural communities, that's even more so, just because we have the outdoors around us all the time. So just the fact that we live in the outdoors, there's probably more, or a higher percentage of outdoor recreation. 9.9 billion in consumer spending annually, 99,000 direct jobs, salaries, and 623 million in state and local revenue. More than twice as many jobs in New Mexico depend on outdoor recreation than on the energy and mineral sectors combined. And as great as it's there, it's not a boom and bust cycle. And I think we've had, there's been a lot of conversation about what's gone on with the crazy French ranch and the purchase of it by Trinidad. And they realized that their marijuana industry was just that. It was another boom and bust. And they didn't want, they've experienced that, just as we have with our different extraction. It's up or down. Recreation doesn't have, I mean, it'll, it goes up and down slightly with the economy because recreation is based on discretionary income. So if you don't have a lot of money, you don't recreate quite as much. But it's not boom or bust. It's much more gradual. So it's a far more stable economic model to build on. Not to say that we wouldn't want to have a big business. I mean, obviously, that would be great. But to have that foundation on other things besides something that's boom and bust is a great idea. And that's what Trinidad is trying to do with the development of the crazy French. So this is, this just came out from the governor's office, which I found quite apropos. It says, "I want to show the rest of the country that's engaging in outdoor recreation. We can do it better." That's Governor Lujan Grisham. "New Mexico has as much natural beauty as anywhere in the world. We're going to bring in business that alive in our rural communities, partner with our tribes and pueblos, and we are going to send a beacon to tourists, the young adults, and the world over. New Mexico is yours to explore." And so it's, I mean, obviously, being in the recreation business to see the state putting out this kind of message. And as it says in the top, they're considering creating a division within state government dedicated to expanding outdoor recreation with the related economic development. When the state's pushing it, that's a good sign. That's something that's, you know, sending off bells and whistles that it was something we want to get involved with. So recreation recap. There's not really not much to recap. I think particularly going back to just taking one factor of recreation and seeing what kind of impact it has, whether it's baseball or basketball, you know, the health and wellness. You know how much money is spent in exercise equipment that ends up sitting in someone's bedroom to hang clothes on? But there's billions and billions of dollars that are spent in recreation. So now to touch a little bit on the Park and Rec Department. Believe it or not, the Park and Rec Department is almost 10 years old. We were established in February of 2010. So we will celebrate our 10-year anniversary next year. The Aquatics Center will be operating under its eighth summer this year, which is kind of hard to believe how fast time has flown. "The vision of the department is to be a prominent force in enhancing the quality of life of Raton and regional residents and in promoting Raton as a recreation destination." That is what we as an department are trying to do. That's our vision. "Our mission is to enhance the health, wellness, and quality of life for the citizens of Raton, regional residents, and visitors to Raton by providing and promoting wholesome recreational activities, well-maintained recreation facilities, and customer service-oriented staff." Just today, we got a call from Aguilar Schools who want to bring their students on May 28th to the pool. We also got a call from Springer Schools, who are gonna bring some of their students in April. So we definitely feel as a department, we have a regional influence. From whether the events we put on or the facilities that we maintain, our goal is to be an influence, not just for Raton, but for the region as a whole. So organizational structure, this is, I wish this was our organizational structure. This is the ideal organizational structure of a Park and Rec Department, with the Park and Rec Director at the head, an associate director, and then the divisions within that department. If you start to the left, you have your park superintendent. We have, as the way we function here, Public Works pretty much maintains our parks and does our fertilizing, our grass cutting, our weed mowing. And Jason and his guys, for the resources they have, do a fabulous job. And my hat is off to them. They do a great job in keeping our parks looking like what parks should look like when people come into town. The next department head would be a program director. This is the individual who would be in charge of putting all the various programs that the city would offer and would supervise the program counselors, the coaches, the referees, under those various programs. So this would be like Little League, basketball, taekwondo, whatever it is that the city was actually putting on as a recreation program. Next one is the aquatics, aquatic director. The aquatic director would have two people under them. One would be the head guard, which would be responsible for training and for supervising all the lifeguards. There are some places that have multiple pools, and so that person would be responsible for that. The other person underneath the aquatics director would be the program director, and that person is responsible for all the variety of programs that would come out of a aquatics department. So your swim lessons, your aqua yoga, your water aerobics, water volleyball. I mean, there's water polo. There could be swim teams. All would come out under that individual. And they would also supervise the water safety instructors and the coaches and the other instructors that have to do with aquatics. A big department would have a facility director. That would be a person who's in charge of all the various facilities, whether it be ball fields, aquatic centers, rec centers, stuff like that, and they would have their staff under them. Sometimes the very bottom one there are CPOs, that's Certified Pool Operators. Sometimes they're under the aquatics department, depending on how that structure is set up. Next is special events. A really big department would have a special events coordinator who would put together the various special events that the community is putting on and would supervise the staff and volunteers to make that happen. And then towards the very end, some municipalities would have their tourism, economic development part of the recreation department, just for the fact that recreation is promoting the town, whether it be through its facilities or through its events. And so, Raton Park and Rec Department, we kind of are like, you dump some pasty stuff and we filter into all those little cracks in some portion or another. We do offer programs that we'll talk about, obviously, aquatics. We maintain most of the facility, particularly just the aquatic center. I'm sure you're all kind of aware of the special events that we put on and our involvement in tourism and economic development. So our structure's a little bit different, but we are moving, would like to move eventually, to a department that's that grandiose. Because if we are, that means that recreation is really going strong in Raton, New Mexico. So right now, we currently have a full-time staff, myself as the director. We have a part-time associate director, which is JR Alderetti. And then we have 15 to 18 seasonal staff, depending on the time of year. So in our off-season, we don't need as many lifeguards, so we don't have as many. We beef that up a little bit in the summertime to sufficiently staff the aquatic center for summer hours. Some of the things we've done, we sponsored a variety of different programs. We have our social dance instructor right here, Joe Rodman. So he's done our social dance for a long time. We've done youth volleyball, zumba. We've done the basketball league. We liaised on with some of the other... So that's part of our mission, is that we don't necessarily provide, but we'll also promote wholesome recreational activities. So if there's other organizations, for example, Little League, men's and women's softball, the Mandala Summer Outdoor School, we will do what we can, which is usually marketing or promotion. Sometimes we'll do the registration for them to help those programs succeed, which is actually a great partnership. Because we, as the Park and Rec Department, don't have the staff and the time to necessarily sponsor or host those. But if we can do what we can to help those individuals put on those programs, it's a win-win for everybody. Our aquatics, we offer Aqua Zumba. We do swim lessons. Well, we contract swim lessons out to third parties. So there's instructors who have made an arrangement with the aquatic center. We give people who are interested in having swim lessons, these people's phone numbers. They then contact those and they make up, set up the lessons between them. Water aerobics, aqua yoga. We did water volleyball for a while. Didn't quite catch on, so that got scratched. A variety of facilities and amenities that we've either brought into the park system or have managed. Some of the highlights, the dog park, which the Police Officer Association adopted and took over, has been, you know, very well received, the two different disc golf courses. Commissioner Chavez was involved in the creation of the Veterans Memorial. So a lot of different things that we have done over the years to try to bolster and grow our recreation facilities. Our special events. We like to tout our special events. I think we've, the Park and Rec Department has tried to do a lot, to both to provide things for the community, but to also be a tourism draw for people to come into town and to participate in different things. From the Osos, which was a very enlightening and trying experience, to the Vermejo Brunch, which is our most popular activity that we've been able to do in partnership with Vermejo Park Ranch. Lots of different things that we've tried to do, and we've tried to make them not just a one-and-done activity or an event, but something that's reoccurring that people can count on every year. So the next one we have coming up is our Aqua Easter Egg Hunt, will be, believe it or not, next month. So some accreditation, different things at the Park and Rec Department. I do have a bachelor's degree in recreation management from Brigham Young University. Something kind of funny with that. So when I went to BYU, the recreation management major was housed in the College of Physical Education. And about a year and a half ago, I started getting magazines, alumni magazines, from the Marius School of Business, BYU Marius School of Business. I was like, "Well, this doesn't make sense. I didn't go to business school." Maybe, you know, maybe my sister did. Maybe it was, shoot, I was getting her magazine. And it kept on coming and kept on coming, so out of curiosity, I researched why. And BYU has taken the recreation management degree out of the College of Physical Education and moved it to the School of Business, which I find apropos, that no longer are we as recreation directors teaching people how to play badminton and stuff like that. But it is a, recreation is a business enterprise, and it is a business study. So it's housing the... There was some other stuff on there, but it just all went away, but you don't want... That's great. So the department also has a willingness to first responder. I am a certified lifeguard instructor, so I train all our lifeguards, which saves the city a substantial amount of money, not having to contract out to do that. Some highlights, the Climax Canyon Trail, as you are aware, was designated a national recreation trail last year. So on and so forth. Kind of a, one that we like to tout is the creation of the Raton Beautification Coalition in the Summer of Color. That, I think, has been very well received and is something that we look forward to continuing to grow as part of that coalition and to make, continue to beautify Raton. Other things that we've done and do. Probably one of noteworthy is I do sit on the Raton Regional, or the Northeastern Regional Marketing Tourism Board. That's a marketing board that's put on by the tourism department, and it's very beneficial. Jessica often attends the various meetings with me, and I think it's been very good, not just to promote Raton, but to promote Colfax County, and let the folks in Santa Fe know that we are alive and well up here in the northeast corner of New Mexico. These are all the folks that we do business with on a regular basis, in some fashion or another. And I think the, a lot of, in a town like this with, you know, few resources, we don't have that big, huge department that we looked at. The way we're able to get things done is by partnering with these other entities to make things happen. From whether it be the Shades of the Southwest Youth Art Show. We invite all the schools to come and participate. To liaison with the different chambers of commerce, whether it be Cimarron or the Los Anamis County Chamber of Commerce, to the different service organizations. We like to work. And that's the only reason the Beautification Coalition works, is because it is just a partnership of everybody in town trying to move in a common goal to achieve, or a common direction to achieve a common goal. Future plans. So this is where I ask for money. The space two of the aquatic center, the Wellness Center, an event center. So something along that lines would be fabulous, but that's just off the internet. That's a bike park. Cool bike park. There's one in Colorado, in Denver, that's, it's very cool, something that we could, would be an amenity. Not a lot, it wouldn't, that's a little intense, I think, for maybe what we would want to do, but something along those lines, particularly as biking increases and gets more popular, particularly with our, you know, being in the proximity of Angel Fire and the different things that they do there. An outdoor amphitheater. I think we've actually had discussions about that. It would be fabulous, just as an outdoor venue, in association with, you know, the Gate City Music Festival, high school graduations, outdoor concerts, something like that as a draw to, not just for the public, but you can bring, you know, be the Red Rocks of Raton and have fabulous concerts here, something like that. And then sand volleyball. I actually was able, through some other funding, to purchase the nets and the poles and everything we need. I'm just lacking some sand. And there is particular sand to have a proper sand volleyball court. We can't just go dig up some dirt somewhere. There's actually beach sand. But you'd be surprised, beach sand is kind of expensive in this part of the country. So, but that's, those are some of our future plans that we'd like to accomplish, just to continue to enhance and beautify and grow Raton. Any questions?
I'd just like to say, having the opportunity to work with Jared. I came here and I had social dance classes I had done with the University of New Mexico, Central New Mexico Community College. Coming here, it was really fantastic. The facility that we were able to work with Jared on, our convention center, that floor is like one of the best in the world to dance on. And the support I got from Jared, the help with handouts and collecting the money and all that sort of stuff. And our dance classes haven't made the last couple of years, but we had classes with like almost 30 couples in. We filled that whole convention center up, and that went off for several years. And we'll get it going again at some point.
Yeah, we will.
I guess we, everyone learned how to dance, and that was it. But I think something happened, the dances went away, I don't know. But we'll figure it out. I'd just like to say, we have a real treasure here in Jared Chatterley. He does an awesome job. He does an awesome job and I really appreciate as an instructor the support I got. And I thought we had really good classes.
I agree. Thank you, Joe. Any questions?
Mayor Protem and Commissioner, I would just state that it's been several years since we've done this department informational program for the commission. And we will come to the commission every month with the department. And generally, information on what's going to the department, it's, you know, it's presented to the commission from me and you have questions about what's going on in departments and it goes through the city manager filter. And so this is an opportunity, I've told department heads, for you to present whatever information that you want to present to the commission and to the public. And also, this is your commissioner's chance or the public's chance to ask questions to the department head. And you don't, you need that city manager filter. You can ask them directly. So we, Jared drew the short straw and made the presentation first on behalf of department heads. We will follow up with each department, but this is for that exchange of information. And they have a message that they want to present to you. And then, of course, you know, you're free to get anything back from department heads that you would like to know or ask about. So this is something that we haven't done for a while.
Well, we appreciate you taking that short straw.
Thank you. I appreciate, I'm glad that we're willing to bump it a couple of weeks because had it been the day was, I'd be doing sign language because my voice was not working so well.
This was very well put together and informative.
Thank you, sir.
I think you do a good job.
Appreciate it.
You and I have clashed over there a couple of times back in the thing, but it's a tremendous job that he does here.
Thank you.
And we like you for it.
Appreciate it.
We do appreciate the work you do.
Thank you.
Wish we did have that pot of gold to give you.
I could do a lot with it, or try anyway.
But you know what, the push coming to our area of outdoor recreation with the French Track, with the new Parks and Rec state officials, I think that it's going to come to pass that a lot of these things that you talked about today will be part of drawing the people right here to our community.
I agree. I agree. In fact, just kind of my last comment is I think with the developments that are going on in Trinidad and with the Fisher's Peak Ranch, the involvement of Better Cities and their initiatives for economic development, some of the different projects such as the Beautification Coalition and different things, I think Raton is poised within the next three to five years to really, if we take advantage of these things and position ourselves well, to really take off. Just the things around the horizon, I hope, and I have all confidence in you as elected officials to position Raton to be there so that we don't see this boat go by and be wondering how come we didn't get on board. So I turn it over to you.
Thank you.
I obviously know a lot about the Parks and Rec Department, but I think the question I'm going to ask every department a little bit is about security. So have things been, with security systems, vandalism, that kind of thing over at the Aquatic Center?
Knock on wood, and you probably just cursed us. We have not had an issue with vandalism. When we first opened, we did. We had several broken windows. We had the vehicle vandalized. But ever since then, I think since just the issue with the different, you know, issues with the Aquatic Center stabilized. As far as the outside, we really haven't dealt with any serious vandalism issues, tagging or anything like that. Our cameras inside the building as far as security are not currently functioning right now. So although we do have the surveillance in place, it isn't actually operative. And that does lead, in the summertime, theft is a problem. I tell people, on any given day during the summertime, there are three to five people who are at the pool just to steal. That is the only reason there is just a target-rich environment and they're there to steal. And I think that may just be the nature of the situation. But in general, things are pretty good. One of the, I would like eventually, you know, in the grand beautiful scheme of things with lots of money, to eventually have outdoor lighting to light the walking path that's out there around Roundhouse Park. It would just, it would offer more people a longer time to use it. And with more lighting, that would definitely decrease the amount of just park vandalism that goes on because there's always graffiti issues out in Roundhouse Park. But in general, things are, as I say, knock on wood, pretty, pretty good.
What will it take to get that camera system back up?
We've had talks with Scott and with Michael Ann about, I think there's a need overall, even the convention center, that we're going to look at all the different facilities that need that and try to do something all at once. More than anything, our cameras are still pretty good. It's our server, the device that collects the pictures and holds it has just, like I said, it's eight years old now and that stuff tends to wear out over time. Commissioner Jacomo, you have a question?
Yeah, how's your outdoor mom and dad program going this year?
It is going very well, thank you. So the mom, this will be the seventh year of the Master of the Mountain Adventure Relay. I still have not reached my goal of 100 participants, but we are marketing very hard. The advantage of partnering with state parks and having the event there is that state parks uses their marketing and promotion amenities or resources to help promote the event. So I'm anticipating that this year will be the year that we hit our goal of 100 participants for the mom. The dad, last year was its inception year. We got a great response from those who are, who participated. As part of the Tourism Board, there's a push to promote mountain, or just biking in general. And so we're going to use that, those resources as part of the Regional Marketing Board to try to encourage and gain more people to participate, not just in the dad, but in mountain biking and biking in this area too. So I think we're on track. I'm hoping. Thank you.
I have one question. So the other day I noticed that the backwash was kind of dripping and I noted that normally it's either off or on, so I just wondered if you wanted to speak about any maintenance issues or, as the longevity of the building and whatnot, I know there's going to be time and we talked about that.
Yeah. The Aquatic Center is, it's getting to that point where it's not an old building, like 20 or 30 years old, where it's already gone through several remodels and several upgrades. It's at that point where it's new, just starting to get old. And so we're starting to see some of those maintenance issues. We had the motor that does the bubbles, that puts the bubbles in the pool, has burnt out. And I would not have thought that just this little motor that I could hold costs $4,000 to replace. You mentioned the auto fill. That shut-off valve will have to be replaced automatically because it's not sealing all the way. There are different things that we're dealing with, but yes, we will be in the future looking at some maintenance issues that need to be addressed.
Anyone else?
Good job.
Thank you very much, Commissioner. Appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. And I really like your pants.
So rare.
I'll let that one go.
Me too. Okay, next item on the agenda is deliberate and act on Raton Housing Authority Board appointments. Mr. Berry, do you want to talk about this or do you want me to?
Mayor Protem and Commissioner, in your packet you have a list of where we're at on Raton Housing Authority. You can see that that is a board of five persons. They are each appointed for a five-year term. Those terms are staggered. In reviewing the list, we have found that we have three seats that we need to address. So John Duran and Terry Segata have applied to, have reapplied for their seat. Those are existing board members. I believe you have their application in your packet. And then we have consideration of a vacant seat. And you have, I believe, one application in your packet that's submitted by Victor Romero for your consideration. I would just add, Mayor Protem, that additionally, we have other boards that we would ask the public to consider sitting on. And that's how things work in a small community is people step up to fill some of these needs. And so we have a need of someone to volunteer to sit on our Planning and Zoning Commission. We have an opening on our Lodger's Tax Advisory Board. We have a reappointment coming up for the Raton Public Service Company Board of Trustees, as well as the Water Board. So we will accept applications on those. We'll accept applications for any board. And if a person wants to submit an application for a particular board, we will keep that on file and then bring that to the commission at the appropriate time.
Very good. This particular board I'm associated with and it tends to run very smoothly. Anybody have any questions? Well, then I'll entertain a motion to accept the appointees.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second to approve the Raton Housing Authority Board appointments. Who are they? We have John Duran, Terry Segata, and Victor Romero. Any other questions or comments, concerns? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? The ayes have it, the motion passes. Deliberate and act on public celebration permits for the Raton Main Street Spring Hops and Vines Event, April 27th at the Raton Museum. Mr. Berry?
Mayor Protem and Commissioner, you have the paperwork in your packet for the public celebration permit for this event. Spring for Hops and Vines is an event that has taken place over numerous years and passes, it's a successful event for Raton, held at the Raton Museum. Mayor Protem, we have representatives from Raton Main Street here that can give you specific information on it. I think it's good to bring them forward and talk about the event and also talk about the vendors that we anticipate, we're asking for your consideration on some, ladies?
Hi, Commissioner, Mayor Protem, and City Manager Berry. We, this is our eighth year doing this event. This is one of our fundraisers for Raton Main Street. And this year, we have Colfax Ale Cellar, Blue Dragonfly Brewing Company out of Cimarron, and Noisy Water Winery out of Riedoso. You'll see we had a fourth on here. The fourth is not coming, but the other winery is going to bring their wine. So it'll be like having two. And then we've also partnered with our downtown eateries so that we can feature the Bakery, Bruno's, hopefully La Cocina, Enchanted Grounds, and the Ice House. And that's who will be providing the food this year. We just thought, thinking outside the box, something different.
We nearly doubled in downtown eateries, if you think about it, with the addition of the Ice House and the Bakery. And so we decided to try and do something a little bit different, plus it'll allow us to make more money to help fund some of our other events.
We will also have the great silent auction again this year. And I have a really cool fishing trip from Vermejo and I'm staring at Commissioner Chavez right now. You give me a thousand bucks and it's yours. Overnight stay and everything at Vermejo, come on. But we're working with local businesses and different wineries around the state are sending in baskets. And so it's usually a really good fundraiser for us.
I think you had them at Donuts.
Yeah, Donuts, yeah. And you'll be really excited to see that our glasses that we give out this year will actually have the brand on it.
Nice.
It's very exciting. And there are only 200 of them, so it's the first 200 people that come through the door get those.
It's, I know you're laughing, but we might actually run out. We came close last year, so.
And this is a really good partnership with the museum. It's really exciting when people come and they've never, ever been in our museum. And they walk around and they're like, wow, this is cool. Yes, it really is. So it's a great partnership that we have with them.
Mayor Protem and Commissioner, the final action will be, the approval will be issued by the state of New Mexico, but that would require consent of the commission, which we're asking for your consideration for this evening.
Thank you. Any questions for these ladies?
I'll make a motion to approve the public celebration permits for the Raton Main Street Spring Hops and Vine Event, April 27th, for Colfax Ale Cellar, Blue Dragonfly Brewing Company, and Noisy Water Winery.
Second.
Any other comments or concerns, questions? We have a motion and a second to approve public celebration permits for the Raton Main Street Spring Hops and Vines Event, April 27th, at the Raton Museum. Can we have a roll call vote on this?
Commissioner Chatterley?
Yes.
Commissioner Jacomo?
Yes.
Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Schuster?
Yes. Motion passes.
Thank you.
All right, next item is deliberate and act on Lodger's Tax Advisory Board recommendations. Mr. Berry?
Mayor Protem and Commissioner, in your packet you have a memorandum with recommendations from the Lodger's Tax Advisory Board. That is from their March 7th meeting and then this comes to the commission for final action. And so I was not present at the board meeting or most of the board meeting. I think that Commissioner Chatterley was present for a lot of the meeting. In addition, we have a couple of our applicants with us on hand here as well in the case that questions come up about this. But what I can do, Mayor Protem, is read these out loud from the summary sheet. And then you have a lot of attached information in your packet regarding these applications. So recommendation number one from the Lodger's Tax Advisory Board, and correction, they met on March 6th and the memorandum is dated March 7th. Lodger's Tax Advisory Board is recommending to the city commission that $5,400, that works out to $900 per month through the current fiscal year, be awarded to the center for sustainable, for community innovation, get me on that one every time, for media advertising and marketing. And that would be funded from the media management line item. Secondly, we have a recommendation from the Lodger's Tax Advisory Board that $2,032 be awarded to the Albuquerque Journal for advertising in their summer guide. And I think you have some corresponding documentation in the packet regarding that. This item will be coordinated with Jessica Barfield at the Center for Community Innovation. That would be under the media advertising and marketing item that you see above. And that would be credited to the print advertisement line. And then finally, Lodger's Tax Advisory Board is recommending to the commission that $12,000 be awarded to KRDO Television for advertising. Connie is present with us from KRDO. This will be coordinated with Jessica Barfield at the center and that would be charged to the contingency fund. Mayor Protem.
Very good. Very good. Any comments or questions on those recommendations?
One thing that I know for the Albuquerque Journal, they were also interested in looking at the possibility of distributing the Raton Visitor's Guide through their, through their means. They were going to look into some pricing, way even that, we'd have to have more print in there. I don't know if that possible. Jessica probably has more details, but.
You talked about the one that the chamber puts out.
Yeah, there was just a small discussion about that. I don't know if it came to anything or not.
Yeah, so originally the Albuquerque Journal, Melzra Vincent is his name, had recommended actually doing the printing of a visitor's guide, a full visitor's guide for the city. And we said that would, you know, be duplicative of what the chamber's already doing. And so he is going to provide us with a quote of how much it would cost for us to give them the actual guides that we print and have them distributed with one of their Sunday Albuquerque Journal. You know, whenever they go out and do all of their distribution, they would include us as an insert. That goes all the way from Albuquerque. That goes all the way from Albuquerque down to parts of Colorado.
Right. Have you spoken with Chamber members on that?
We have not, because I haven't gotten the quote yet. I just started working with Vincent today, because I was gone yesterday. So this is, it's just been a couple of days. So I anticipate getting that quote, and I can provide that out to the Chamber so that they can decide if they can print more, or if it's a good way, means to distribute that. And then I'm not so sure, did I hear it was for just this fiscal year that they were approving the marketing management?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. So in regard to that, I think that we would come back with a separate action that would consider continuing that through the upcoming fiscal year. That is anticipated, but the nature of the promotional funds here, I think, our consideration would be for this fiscal year currently.
To the end of June 2019.
Yeah, that's correct. Mayor Pro Tem.
All right. Any other questions, comments?
I also know that Connie and Jessica kind of worked out, there was a bigger budget for TV and whatnot and web advertisement, and then it kind of came smaller, and then they've kind of worked out this for what the Lodger's Tax Board was, maybe the $12,000. And there's some exciting things going on with the online presence, with website takeovers, and then some smaller commercials and whatnot. So I think it's a new avenue that we haven't really explored, and I was excited to see some of those ideas, too, for those, the KRD-O monies.
Very good. Yeah.
I like all three of the recommendations that they put together, the information that was really good for us.
Yeah, nicely put together, thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Hold on a second.
We have a motion to approve and a second, the recommendations for non-promotional funding request from Raton, oh, sorry, my wrong thing. I already turned the page, didn't I? Sorry. Deliver, to accept the Lodger's Tax Advisory Board recommendations for medium advertising marketing through the Center for Community Innovation, Albuquerque Journal Summary Guide, and KRD-O TV advertising. Any other comments, questions, or concerns? None? All in favor, say, sign by, vote by the sign of aye to approve?
Aye.
And any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Now we can move on to the next page. Deliberate and act on Lodger's Tax non-promotional funding requests from the Raton Country Club for sprinkler system improvements and maintenance equipment.
Mayor Pro Tem and Commission, at the last regular City Commission meeting, the Commission had heard a proposal, a presentation from representatives of the Raton Country Club for non-promotional funding for the sprinkler system improvement and maintenance equipment. And the Commission had asked for some additional information, supporting information in regard to that. We have been fairly busy in that interim time, especially with the Better City visit, and we really have not completed that process of getting the information for the Commission. So I would ask that we would postpone this item until we have a chance to work a little closer with the Country Club representatives about putting together all of the information that's necessary for this consideration.
Very good. So I will entertain a motion to postpone. Item F?
I'll make a motion to postpone item F, the Lodger's Tax Non-Promotional Funding Request from Raton Country Club for Sprinkler System Improvements and Maintenance Equipment, until the City Manager is able to talk to them about the scope of work, the equipments and the terms.
Hold on a second.
Very good. Have a motion and a second to postpone item F, non-promotional funding of the, for the Raton Country Club Sprinkler System. All in favor, vote by the sign of aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Deliberate and act on Economic Development Services Contract between City of Raton and High Bay Enterprises.
Mayor Pro Tem and Commission, following the City Commission's consideration of the proposals for Economic Development Services, we had a number of awards, and we have approved a couple of those in form of an agreement. And we have a couple of those proposals still outstanding. And the agreement with High Bay Enterprises is one of those that we've been working on since that time. I had consulted with some folks from the New Mexico Economic Development Department. And then this is patterned after their, one of their local economic development agreements. And so we wanted to make sure that it would meet the requirements of the LITA statute, as well as our local LITA ordinance. I have worked with Mr. Rodman. Mr. Rodman is present here tonight, representing High Bay Enterprises. I think it's a great project. We submit the agreement to you, and we've worked on these terms for a while now. Ms. Rodman surely would take your comments at this time, but I believe that we are in agreement, and you have my recommendation as far as the project participation agreement. Just for the sake of the media and the public that are listening, I will try to go over the basic terms. This city has allocated $37,000 in funds designated for economic development for use in the project. And the project would go towards the renovation of a building located on Second Street in our commercial district that is currently vacant. We understand that there would be commercial enterprise in the building that would center around automotive enthusiasts, light manufacturing, and possibly some public gathering type of space in that building. So we look forward to occupying a building that currently is vacant. And I'll, is there any questions, or we have Mr. Rodman available if you have any questions?
Mr. Rodman?
Yes.
Do you have any fun, exciting news for us? I think we're excited for your project.
Well, the roof is still leaking. We're hoping to get that resolved by the, by the end of summer. And then I've still got the building plugged into my building next door so we can have a light in there, but we're hoping to get that resolved also with, with your support. And just really like to thank Paul Jenkins from Grow Raton, and Mr. Scott Berry from the, our City Manager, for the, for the meetings that we've had and the work we've done on that agreement. I feel that the confidence you have in us, that we can live up to our obligations there, and get that building back online, and hopefully help some folks start some businesses in our community, or provide some space for activities that maybe we are not able to accommodate at this point in time. But really looking forward to the opportunity to work with the city on this project.
Good.
I'm very excited, and the contract to me, I've read it pretty carefully, looks great.
It does.
Capable, and just for the public as well, the city is expecting a few jobs from this project, and that's part of the terms of the agreement, and we're looking forward to that.
That is, the purpose of this is to create, create jobs, encourage entrepreneurship, and support local business. And I would point out that Mr. Rodman has been very successful in the old Chaimino Brothers Ford Building. Joe, you've got really five enterprises operating in that building currently.
Right. We've had a family business incubator going over there, and so I think that those, those activities that we have going on over there have a lot of potential. They're still struggling with growing pains, and, but we're, we're here to, to make it work, and we'll continue with those projects also. Both facilities together, I think, will really leverage off of each other, too. And so there's a lot of crossover that we'll be able to go back and forth. If someone rents space at the building on Second Street, if they need to use equipment or an area in the other building that isn't available yet at the Second Street building, we can move those people back and forth.
Very good.
Good job.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve Economic Development Services Contract between City of Raton and High Bay Enterprises.
Second.
Very good. Have a motion and a second to accept the Economic Development Services Contract between City of Raton and High Bay Enterprises. Are there any comments, questions, or concerns? Seeing none, vote yes, or yea, aye, by, if you're in favor.
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Seeing none, motion passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for your hard work.
Thank you. Looking forward to getting this project online.
Very good. All right. Deliberate and act on Resolution 2019-15 FY19 Budget Adjustment Number 11. I assume this is Mrs. Antonucci.
Mayor Pro Tem and Commission, in your packet is a budget adjustment. As you will see, we have several line item adjustments within the general fund. In addition, we did get an insurance recovery check on an insurance claim, and it was for replacement of the announcer's booth at Gabrelly Field. So we are adding that to the revenue side and also the expense side for the purchase of a building to be up and running for baseball season. Also, I'm adjusting our state grant and aid, just to reflect the actual amount that was received this year. And then also, on the NMED grant, it was noted by DFA during my quarterly report that I needed to do an adjustment for the portion of the project costs that were not covered by the grant. So that's that adjustment, and I believe that's it. So I would recommend it's approval, unless you have any questions.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2019-15 Fiscal Year 19 Budget Adjustment Number 11.
Hold on a second.
Have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 2019-15 Budget Adjustment Number 11 for Fiscal Year 19. All in favor, vote by the sign of aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Mike Lynn. City Managers Report.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. I have recently been working on a project that some of you have also participated in, and that is finding, making a request of our federal elected representatives, as well as the proper person in the census tract, to try to address an issue that we have discovered relating to the census tract. And that basically is that our downtown historic commercial area is located in a tract which would not allow new market tax credits or some of the advantages of the Opportunity Zone that was designated in 2018. And so we're asking that that boundary be adjusted. So Mayor Sagata is actually in Washington, DC now, as a Vice President of Municipal League. He had attended a conference in regard to Opportunity Zone and what that does for a local economy today. That's good information. In regard to that, I will be attending a conference on March 27th in Santa Fe in regard to Opportunity Zone, but our downtown area is excluded from that. Now, we still have a large portion of our commercial area in town that is, is in that, and that really brings some, as is stated in the name, opportunities to Raton. But we are working on this downtown area, and the intent of the Opportunity Zone or new market tax credits is really to catalyze private investment in some economically challenged areas, so that we think that we're a good candidate for that. So we put together a packet. Mayor Sagata is meeting with the federal delegation tomorrow. He will deliver that packet, and of course, we're going to have to work with the Census Bureau, and this is just in advance, in advance of their 2020 census. So we will report back to you on how that's working, but it's really necessary for some of this private investment to flow into this downtown area, as we found out. We conducted a pre-construction conference that was actually conducted by our engineers, Molsen and Corbman, for the, a project at Raton Municipal Airport that we talked about last fall. That's Phase Two of the Taxiway Alpha Reconstruction Project. Contractor on that is Northern Mountain Construction. We had awarded that project last fall, taking a winter shutdown on the project. Northern Mountain tells us that they're ready to go to construction, and that project will commence in April. So we will report back to you on that project. The, Mr. Campbell from Raton Water Works tells me that the contractor for the Raton Filter Plant Project will mobilize next week to that project, and construction will start at that time, and we anticipate construction to be about a year on the filter plant renovation project. So that's a large project, in excess of $2.5 million, to modernize our plant and certain equipment in the plant. So we'll be talking about that a lot over the next 12 months. Mr. Campbell also has informed me that Lake Malloya Reservoir elevation has risen about two feet in recent weeks. And of course, in the last month or so, we've had really good results for precipitation. And we've seen that at Sugar Creek Canyon and the watershed for Lake Malloya, so that is coming up. We've also seen a good result at Eagle Ness Reservoir. We talked to somebody from the State Engineers Office today. So Raton has full storage in Eagle Ness Reservoir, and we have our full allotment for 2019. There's, the lake there has risen considerably. We're in good shape compared to this time last year, and there's still a lot of snow up there, and so we would expect some more precipitation. A lot of this precipitation has occurred in the form of snow, and of course, that's kept our Public Works Department pretty busy. So I really want to acknowledge the efforts of our Public Works Department during our recent snows. They're out there at odd hours trying to get the streets passable. I think they've done a really good job. We're a pretty small crew, and so a lot of our guys have worked lengthy hours there, and I think they, I'd like to say thank you to them. They, they don't really get the appreciation they should get, but they've done a great job this winter. And of course, we're not out of the snow season yet, but the great thing about rain is you don't have to put a plow on it or cinders, and so we like the rain as well. And that's all I have, Mayor Pro Tem.
Very good. Any, any comments?
I would just like to say thanks to the guys over at the sewer treatment plant. I had the chance to go over there last Wednesday and had an awesome educational tour. We, we take that for granted, I think, every day, of what goes on on that end, and all their little microbes that they keep happy, you know, processing all our waste system. So I was completely impressed. It was well-run and clean, and so thank you to Lloyd and his crew for that great tour, and the Water Department for getting that going, so, awesome.
Mr. Jacamo?
Yes, I'd like to commend the City Manager. He worked really hard. I hate doing this to him, but he did, the other night, he worked, he had to work late into the night and everything to get this report that we sent to, to Washington, to, about our economy, I mean, our economic zone, and those tax credits. And him and Mike Lynn have been working diligently on this, and I think that they're, they should be commended for that.
Agreed.
Thank you.
And Jared Chatterley, that was an excellent, the last Water Board gave us a meeting, and it was about sewers. Yours was a lot better.
That's good to know.
It really was, yeah. And I'm going to thank the Water Department for flushing the lineup on North First, because backed up on us. Anything else from the general public? Seeing none, this meeting is adjourned.